There may be times that we go through a storm or, you know, we have troubles come our way and, and Lord, that's the time that we need to lift each other up. And Lord, we just pray that our community would help those that are in a time of need right now, those that are going through a struggle. And Lord, may we be always attentive to those who may be in need. Lord, just keep our eyes open and, and Lord, if there's a way we can help, let us all be able to help. Lord, we just continue tonight thanking for our, our veterans that have fought for our freedom here in the United States so we can have this meeting here tonight. We just thank you for the men and women who have made the ultimate sacrifice to the families that have lost loved ones. And Lord, we just remember these folks during this time of Veterans Memorial. Lord, we just thank you for the ones that have served and continuing to serve and, and those that will be serving in the future. We just thank you for all of those. And Lord, just be with our, our public safety, our EMS, our fire department, our law enforcement, and all these guys as they put their lives on the line each night. And Lord, just pray for their safety as they do their job to keep us safe in our community. We thank you for each one of these men that serve on this board. And we just pray, Lord, that you be with us during this night and help us make the best decisions for the people of Hart County. In thy name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Let's all stand for our pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the visible, we will never end justice for all.
Thank you. We'll call the Teasley, October 24, 2023 Hart County Board of Commissioners meeting to order. And first of all, I'd like to welcome each one here tonight. We've got some special guests that will be doing a proclamation during the meeting. We appreciate y'all being here. And, and those that may be watching HTC Channel 3 or on our YouTube channel, Hart County Board of Commissioners, we appreciate Lisa for videoing that and streaming that for us. We appreciate Wes, the dedication he's had each, each time we have a meeting, not only our meeting, but, you know, the city council meetings, Board of Education meetings. Wes is one of those guys you don't see in front of the camera, but what he does from behind the camera is real good for the folks here in Hart County. So we move on to approving the agenda. Do we have anything we need to add?
No changes.
Okay, no changes. Can we get a motion to adopt the agenda as printed?
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Teasley.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Brown. Any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor. It's approved, 5-0 vote. All right, approved minutes of the previous meeting. We've got any additions or corrections to those? If not, can we get a motion to approve as printed?
Make a motion, we approve meetings as printed.
All right, we got a motion by Commissioner Brown, second by Commissioner Bennett. Any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor. It's 5-0 vote to approve. All right, remarks by invited guests, committees, or authorities? We have none tonight. Reports by constitutional officers, department heads. Ms. Kim, you have it? Okay, none tonight. County Administrator's report?
Yeah, a couple of things. Since early voting started and the only thing on the ballot for the county is the SPOLOX. I'm about to go over the SPOLOX numbers just to give the audience already whatever information on exactly what they're voting on. Basically, you see, on this is a six-year SPOLOX because we got an agreement with all the cities, so that lets the SPOLOX on for six years. Our estimated collection over the six years is $30 million. And it's broken down as this. Portions of it are allocated to the cities in the, in the county. The city of Port is a percentage based on population, it's 17.3%. The allocation for the rest of the cities are cash amount, which city of Orson is 716,800, city of Byers is 371,200, and city of Cannon is 74,200. And these were loosely based on the population in each, each town. So that leaves a remainder for the county of 23,647,800. And that's, that's broken down in these categories. Cannon-wide water projects, 4,647,800 dollars. Capital outlay for economic development is 22.5 million, and that includes their debt service on the property, Gateway 2 and 3. That's the bulk of that. There's some extra money there for some more improvements on, on the sites that we still haven't got completely done yet. And again, just some, and some extra money there because you don't know when clients can come in and need this, that, or the other. So that's what that money's for. The county fire department for capital improvements, equipment, vehicles, and some building renovations or replacement, $4 million. Public safety, equipment, capital improvements, $12 million. And we'll go over each one of these to the next slide. And then recreation capital improvement, half a million for that. And again, the amount that's administered by the board commissioners, they have complete control over the dollars, but the recommendations and the projects come from the two authorities for the water and, and the IBA. They, they handle the splitting of that money. These, these categories here are in the direct control of the board commissioners. The public safety and equipment, capital improvement, $12 million. The county fire, $4 million, and the recreation capital improvements of a half million. And breaking down a little bit more, the public safety capital improvements, broken down by law enforcement. The jail payments for six years are figured into this. That's a quake for 6.6 million of that 12 million, for over half of it. Patrol cars, we replace four per year. It's a 24 patrol car, we figure in there, $70,000 a piece, for 1.6 million, 800,000, or 8,000, 800,000, 80,000, I get it right. Been a long day. Vests, we have to replace those so many each year. We try to replace half of them per year. Now comes out to about 14 vests per year, and they have about $1,000 a piece. So there's $84,000 allocated over the six years for replacing the vests. Tagers, we have to replace every two years. So we'll be three replacements of them over the course of the six years at $40,000. So that's $120,000 in money. And the evidence vault at the sheriff's office is completely full. They gotta have more room, and we thought we was building a very big one when we built that one. I found out it's about a third of the size we need. So we got the concrete pad already down there. So we're looking at putting a building up on that pad and putting a vault and a morgue. We don't have a morgue for the corner and storage for the whole county. So that's what that's for, $750,000 there. All that's basically law enforcement. And the rest of the public safety is allocated for EMS and 911. Our replacement is when we can get them, at one new government's program. And they'll run about $200,000 now, up from about 140, what there was two years ago. So inflation has hit everything. So 1.2 million is allocated for that. The extrication vehicle we got out here now, the 1999 model, been well maintained. Our county shop does a wonderful job, but at some point that one will have to be replaced in the next six years. And that's, that's about $250,000 for replacement. Our cardiac monitor, stretchers, all that stuff's gonna be coming up to the end of life. It's gonna be changed out sometime in the next, next six years. Just to kind of give you an idea, a cardiac monitor that you see, we use, run about $35, $36,000 a piece. Stretchers is $20,000 a piece. That's, everything's outrated from prior. So we've got 3/4 of a million dollars budgeted for that kind of stuff. The administrative vehicle, which is supervised running, backup all the calls in, will have to replace at some point in time during that six years. And we got $75,000 in there for that. The 911 equipment, we replaced the CAD system this past year. The phone system is gonna have to be replaced, upgraded. Everything gone from copper cord lines to IP stuff. We're gonna have to change the phone system out. And the radio controls, our controlled heads won't take any more frequencies. We need to add some more frequencies to them until they have to be replaced out. So we've got half a million dollars in there for that. And then rest of the fire. Again, those two, I just want to know, serves every citizen in this county. It don't matter where you live, in the city, county, whatever, it serves every citizen. This county fire is served the county fire district. It does not include the city. But we got to replace some older engines. They're coming to the end of their lives, and we have several tankers that are at the end of their lives, gonna be replaced. With the ongoing situation with volunteerism and the number of calls we're getting, within the near future, we're gonna have to go to some form of paid fire department. Right now, we do not have the housing for them. We got to have housing before we put them on, so that gives us several years to work into this. And more than likely, we'll renovate or remodel or replace central station up here, that's center of the county. That's where you need to hide, house your first ones in. On the new fire station at Byers, we did build in for future where you can add living space upstairs. We didn't finish it out, but it's there when that time comes, that's all we can do. And then they always have to replace those hoes, other equipment. That's what comes out of this company. And then the rec. department, a half a million. And again, that's kind of the director of either board, what they come up with, what their needs are, and what they want to do with that money. But again, if anybody got any questions, I'd be glad to answer them. You know, if you're not here tonight on TV, call me. If you got any question, but I want people to understand what they're voting for or against. But that's it. If there's any question, be glad to answer.
All right, so just, just I just want to make a couple of comments. If you could, Terrell, go back to the public safety, the beginning. Right there. So these things are things we have to do. These are not, these are our needs, not wants. I just want to make that clear. And as you go further into this, we gotta make jail payments. We had no choice there. Other emergency services stuff and public safety, we have no choice in these expenses. And if you go to fire, there's a benefit to everybody in this county that owns property. And that's why we have a four ISO rating. It saves you a tremendous amount of money on your homeowner's insurance. So there is benefits to these things that we continue to have to spend money on. I just want to make sure everybody understands that even the industrial building authority, the debt service, that's gotta be paid somehow. It's either a sales tax or property tax. I'm not threatening anybody or anything, but I just want people to understand from the county standpoint, it's either sales tax and SPOLOX or it's property tax.
True. We didn't, we don't, we have never put wants and desires in there. Everything we've ever had since I've dealt with it has been what we gotta have. It's not something we just want to reach out and grab because we look for, we think it'd be nice. It's stuff either upkeep or replacement stuff we have to do.
Got any other comment? And I would say that it's kind of ironic that our SPOLOX budget is kind of, it parallels with our regular budget through the year. Our public safety is usually one of the most expensive things.
In a general sense, but public safety takes up, so if you throw the court system into it, you're talking about right at 66 to 68% of the entire budget is law enforcement, or public safety and court system.
That is one of the key focuses on this board is public safety for this community.
Just a couple of things, just for information. Long Point Park will close down at the end of this month. That's the normal schedule. It'll be shut down the best day of this month. And on the opposite side, EMS thing, we're seeing, we're seeing this week and the previous week, a lot of hospitals are going on diversion, which means they tell us, don't bring patients there. So if you have to use an ambulance and they, and they say, and they stop me on the phone, that's what it is. Again, if you want to go to hospital X, they'll certainly make that phone call, even if they own diversion to try to get you into that facility. But if they tell you that this hospital's not accepting patients and you have to be rerouted to another, it's, it's just a simple fact that all the major hospitals at certain times are on diversion and not taking patients. So just as a note to, that, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Move on to chairman's report. I don't really have anything tonight that, so we'll move on to District 1, Commissioner Bennett.
I don't really have anything either, but I'd just like to ask that our county citizens, all of our people, just really think about all the sickness and the deaths that's been in the county recently. It just seems like we're overloaded with it and just keep all of our people in our county in your mind and in your prayers, please. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
District 2, Commissioner Teasley.
Terrell, I was gonna ask you about the fire on Ridge Road. Does the county do the flow test or does somebody else do it?
The county does it. And I pulled those, when you called today, I pulled all, and all of those hydrants are rated adequate for residential fire protection. I got the latest flow test here on everyone down the road, down Ridge Road.
When was that thing, when was that test done?
Last one was done September, end of September '22.
So the ones like in Ridgewood or everywhere they add on Ridge Road should be adequate to fire.
They've been, they've been checked in. And again, I've got three, three years worth of records here, and they've been adequate every check for three years.
Okay. How often are they supposed to be tested?
At least once, well, once every 24 months, rotation on.
Okay.
24 months, 36 months.
Yeah.
I'm not sure. I can't, there's a, there's a certain amount we have to test every, every hydrant in the county, you know, certain things.
Have you heard anything on Ridge Road opening back up?
It opened back up tomorrow.
Okay.
Last report I got today, they poured the concrete and cut across the road today, and they were supposed to lay the asphalt today.
Okay.
It's Saturday tomorrow. So it should hopefully be open back up tomorrow.
I appreciate you.
All right, thank you. District board, Mr. Brown.
I don't have anything, Mr. Chairman.
District vice, Mr. Dorsey.
I don't have anything.
All right, we'll move on to chapter.
Can I add one more thing, just for public information?
Yes.
They should be starting on Airline Goldmine Road repair and repaving. If they didn't start today, they should be starting the next few days, just so people know about traffic up there.
They've already got all their equipment up there.
We'll move on to Old Business 12A, Chapter 46, land event standards, second reading. I know the last time we brought this before us and we had some changes that we made and we elected not to take it as a second reading. Those changes have been added in the highlighted sections in the ordinance. But I did get an email yesterday and it's got some more questions, and I'd like to be able to send that to all the commissioners and let them go over that and to our attorney to, there's some good valid points that, and questions that were asked. Rather than take this as a second reading tonight, I'd really have those questions sent to everyone and give everybody time to look them over along with our county attorney before we go with the second reading. Now, that's just my, just my.
I'm fine with it, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
So I don't want to take any action?
No. All right, we'll move on to solar farm ordinance discussion, 12B.
I believe you all have your package of information that the county attorney had supplied to us. So if you have any questions, I probably can answer all of them. I'll refer them to her.
I read through all of these and they differ a lot. And I would like to have more time to take hours and compare it.
I don't think, we haven't read the draft yet.
I'm just saying the one that we're missing and looking at, that I'm looking at versus what I've been reading here, there's a lot to these different counts.
Well, another thing that's gonna be an obstacle is we're talking about, they've got zone districts here, what you can do in each zone district. And Hart County does not have zoning, so that's gonna be a challenge.
A lot of modification to the state's model of ordinance. We have pulled certain provisions from other ordinances around the state that I thought you all might be interested in. Do you have them in a package and send them out if y'all are ready for me to bombard you with information?
Yes, I think it would be good if this were one.
We could be, we could be looking at it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Essentially, the way I looked at a special use permit, if it's gonna be anything other than on a roof, solar panel, it would be a special use permit coming from the board of commissioners. Is that correct? I mean, that's, that's the way I look at the breakdown, that pretty much what you see the solar farms, for instance, the metal structures in a field, that would have to be a special use permit. So anything other than basically rooftop or ready.
Well, that would fall back to the ordinance that would be created, I guess.
It would be governed in the ordinance.
Here, of course, the zoning board does the special use permits and issues those. So of course it would come here, correct? If someone wanted to put in, they'd have to come with special use permit. Another thing that I was seeing was the tree removal. I could see that being an issue, but it was very vague. So I definitely think that'd be something we'd have to look heavily into to figure out how, how do you define what's appropriate, what's not appropriate on tree removal? Because say you have a 10-acre field and they want to remove X amount of trees, at what point do you say yes or no, and issue that variance or issue that permit?
Back to that special permit, are you talking about the property owner having to apply for special purpose?
In order for them to get approved, they have to get a special use permit from the owners. Whatever business on the property owner, whoever's putting up the solar panels.
Well, I was just looking for clarity. When I say property owner, he would have to give a special use permit prior to leasing the land to a contractor.
Yeah.
Okay, just clarity.
All right, listen, when the.
We're not ready to take this on yet.
Yeah, Kim, whenever Kim gets those ordinances out, there's, there's some good information in there, and I think we could take some from each one and maybe come up with a ordinance.
We just need to make sure the more to them doesn't expire. I don't remember when we did that.
Back to Supreme ordinance.
How many acres are some of these farms usually?
I would encourage all the commissioners to reach out to contacts in Elbert County. Elbert County has several ongoing projects and some upcoming that I think some outfit from Texas is putting in. And then I think there's about 20, 20-plus guys coming in next week to start on one farm. And so.
That's in Elbert County?
That's in Elbert County.
Close there.
That would be obviously someone close by to get some reference points of what they're experiencing, what they're looking at, and what's the implication so far.
So does Elbert County already have an ordinance?
Yes, from what I, what I heard.
Franklin County has them also, solar farms. Yeah. Yeah. Well, Mass County must have them. They got, my mother, they got a few over there, but Jefferson County's got a blue meat, you know?
The issue's gonna be with the transmission and getting, getting it on the grid. That's where the problems are coming to play.
All right, well, we'll get those out and so everybody have opportunity to look at those ordinances from different counties and go from there. All right, we'll move on to 12C, bid opening for recreation basketball uniforms.
I feel proud of him. Remember what I put out, I actually got six bids.
He's gonna use that knife. You got a knife, too?
I'll take that knife tomorrow.
Slipped. I had this bid taken that jail.
I got a bid from Destination Athlete of Haversham, Georgia. Brand new jerseys, R2G Sports, youth size 4125, adult size 4250.
So I got a bid from Digital Dash Creative LLC out of Bridgeport, Connecticut. Youth basketball jersey, youth size $14.25 each, adult size $14.75 each.
I got a bid from Garrison Sports Center, Watkinsville. Chan Pro is the name brand they'll be using, basketball jerseys, youth size 3189, adult size 3189.
And this right here is from BSN Sports, youth size 2675, that's for the basketball youth jersey, and adults, $27.
I got a bid from Airwear and Specialty of Texas with a youth size of 3697, adult size 3797.
We wouldn't let Marshall put that on.
Frankie.
We got another bid here.
Bid's from Go Sports USA Incorporated out of Clarkston, Georgia. Let's see here, youth size $20, adult size $20 even. Jerk, it says with shorts, $35. That's it. They did give a jersey in there as though they went above and beyond.
Frankie will travel for some reason. All right, can we get a motion for the rec. director and advisory board and.
So moved, we turn them over to the recreation director and advisory board county administrator for a view and recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Bennett. Second by Commissioner Brown. Any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor. It's 5-0 vote. Okay, the next on the agenda is the IBA director job description. I know Commissioner Bennett made a motion at the table, and Commissioner Dorsey's second it. So we're gonna take action off of it tonight. We need to take it off the table with Commissioner Bennett.
I make a motion to take it off the table.
I don't think it's ready. The changes are not in there.
Well, there's quite a few changes in, including the salary, right up to two years to the bachelors and experience and the travel. They didn't, did not have international travel, as you had mentioned, that's why it didn't have that.
There's nothing in here about it being basically from an industrial standpoint and manufacturing standpoint.
Would you, I understand you were gonna get with Dwayne.
I talked to Dwayne, but I think this is, gotta go back to the IBA before it comes to us.
Okay. I mean, I haven't heard anything from Dwayne on any changes.
Yeah, I talked to Dwayne.
What, so you want to table it again or take no action?
Well, what are we missing here? Can we, can we add it tonight? Just go ahead and approve it?
I think it needs to come through them. But basically what I was looking for is if you rig this, it is not clear whether this is a retail recruiter or if this is industrial manufacturing, whatever the case may be. And Dwayne's position is for the betterment of the time he's been here. It's all pretty much been industrial manufacturing recruiting. And I think that's where this needs to be worded. Because if you read it now, it doesn't say that.
It doesn't say what?
That it's, it's more, it's manufacturing based. I mean, you could read this to say that this could be retail, it could be a lot of different things. could be retail, it could be a lot of different things. I just, I feel like it's got to have more definition to it.
You can add some language, but I mean, from what I read, it kind of...
Yeah, I don't think it's our place to add it. I think it's their place to do it, because this position reports to the IBA. We just have the financial oversight, and because we pay the position, that's why it comes to us for final approval.
So this, this one did not come from the IBA?
Yes, it did. That's the latest version I've got from the IBA.
Yeah, but they, but the IBA wants to change it.
The IBA has... I haven't heard anything from the IBA, other than since they sent this draft.
We don't have anybody here from the IBA.
Well, here's, would this fix this problem? The mission of Industrial Building Authority is to market the county for industrial business instead of just saying business recruitment, industrial?
Just leaving out retail.
Business recruitment. I mean, would that fix it?
And I think over on the minimum qualifications, you've got to have, somebody needs to have the requirements for, they need to understand manufacturing and industrial infrastructure.
Between duty responsibilities and minimum qualifications is where I was getting all of my input from. I thought they would cover it pretty well, but it does not have that language that you spoke. Again, let me, let me interject a little bit now. I understand that the IBA has a good bit of commercial property in Gateway Two and Three, so if you limit it to just industrial, I'm not sure that'll...
I think that means, that needs to be the primary focus, and it could be others as assigned or whatever the case may be. You could word it that way, but this position is gonna be geared towards supporting manufacturing. Our current manufacturers being that liaison between the IBA and the county and the school system and all the other key stakeholders, that's what this position's gonna be. But this position's also gonna need to know about infrastructure, and this is something somebody can learn. I'm not saying it's got to be, but this is something I think they need to know. They're gonna need to know about infrastructure, they're gonna need to know about power, water, sewer requirements, all those things, logistical information. There's a lot of things that go into manufacturing, and being a 30-year manufacturing guy, there's nothing in here that even coincides with that. And that's why I think that we at the minimum need to have that.
Well, and we're gonna, we need to look at who's gonna interview for this position. I think that would be some of the areas that the people that's interviewing these people are gonna look at. I mean, you know...
The problem, Mr. Chairman, is, and I've been involved in these, when these recruiters or who are project managers are out here looking, a lot of times it's done with a third-party search group, they're gonna have a lot of infrastructure-related questions, and whoever this is in this position, I'm not saying they have to know it to be in a position, but they need to be able to do it within a reasonable time, and that's why competencies is part of the heading of this, and minimum qualifications and competencies.
But at the end of the day, they're gonna have to go back to all the departments. I mean, water, sewer, whatever, they're gonna have to go back to the authorities like the water authority.
The way, the way the process works, you'll have, you'll have somebody come in, and you'll have a lead, and then you'll have to make it through multiple rounds of cuts. A lot of people don't know this, Purina come through Hartwell Railroad. It started with corn embargo cars down in Elberton. That's how that started. So I'm just using that as an example, but there's, there's other things that fall into this. And I just think we need to understand what the requirements are. Do we have sewer capabilities, capacity? Somebody needs to understand what that capacity is, be able to define it and work with, you know, in most cases, City of Hartwell, can they handle it, can they treat it, what has to be done.
Well, that's what I'm saying. It's gonna come back to the departments before, they can't make that kind of decision. This guy can't, whoever he is.
Well, it sounds to me like somebody needs to talk to the IBA.
Joe said he's talking to them.
I talked to Dwayne. I'll follow back up with him. I'll get something for the next meeting.
And just, just to be kind of clear, everything from, on page one, from specific duties included, came directly from the IBA.
Yeah, I agree. I agree with you.
I mean, from the conversations I've had with the IBA is Dwayne's ready to retire. He's ready to hang it up. They're ready to start searching. And if this came from them, and if it didn't, or if we need to get it fixed, then they need to get it fixed. Because I mean, this is the second meeting that we've had this on agenda, and we can't make a vote on job description. Somebody needs to come up with a plan and get it here, and if it's not, if it's the IBA's fault, then they need to have a representative here. If it's, if it's not the IBA's fault, then we need to get the show on the road here.
The issue here is the IBA to take action would have to vote on it, so it would have to be a call meeting to make a change to the job description, because Dwayne doesn't have the authority to make that change. This is the board that he reports to, and that's why there needs, really needs to be a call meeting to discuss it, if that's what we want to get done. But I think that there's gotta be some things in here, manufacturing
All right. So we're not gonna take it off the table. Commissioner Bennett's motion died like a second, but we do need to get this done. Like I said, Dwayne's been trying to retire for some time now, and we...
That's what we did. I thought we did take it off the table.
The motion didn't really get accepted.
Yeah, I understand my motion. I didn't know you had a second.
Okay. All right, we'll go on to the county millage certifications tax year 2023. You have before you county MNO 4.463 mills, county EMS 0.500 mills, school MNO 10.524 mills, total millage 15.483 mills. And this is something that we'll run to approve to move forward as far as the millage rate's certification.
Yeah, this certifies the tax rate for the entire county for the 23 tax year.
If I make a motion, we approve.
Got a motion by Commissioner Brown. We have a second. I'll second it. All right, we got a motion, second it. Any discussion?
Yeah, just because I made a motion doesn't mean I necessarily agree with any increase, but here's the thing, this wasn't our decision for that increase. It wasn't our board. They're elected just like we are, so they have to uphold what the constituents that they represent request, and there was three hearings, and from those three hearings, I didn't hear much feedback myself, and I may be wrong, but from what I heard, there wasn't much attendance. So that's why I'm sending a motion. We did our part. We upheld, I felt like, our duties as Commissioners, rolling back the millage, and I applaud our administrative staff for that, being able to do this for our citizens. And I want to make that very clear, that just because I'm making a motion doesn't mean I support any type of tax increase, but nonetheless, process has been done. We need to move on.
I agree with Mr. Brown. I don't, I don't feel good about this either, but I will support it because it's, I guess we need to go forward with it. And I'm not big on tax increases either, but it could, it could use some work.
Well, by law, we can't deny it as bad as I wish we could, because I think we all feel the same way.
Yeah.
It's hard for me to fathom the fact that the school board did raise their millage rate when everybody else is able to do it within reason. And I understand, I have talked to the superintendent on some of the things that they've got hit on, but it's just a concern, and I'm very concerned with all this growth that we've had. Y'all have heard me talk about residential growth and what it does to the, to the tax base and the millage rate. So it's a concern going forward, but we can't legally not approve it.
Got a motion by Commissioner Brown. I second it. Any other questions or concerns from anyone on this? Okay, if not, we'll call for a vote. All in favor, it's five-o vote to approve. Okay, now we'll move into the Veterans Day Proclamation 2023, and we have, Wes, if you can zoom in on that, where Veterans Day Parade's gonna be November 11th, so Saturday, starting at 3 o'clock, and the American Legion is working real hard to promote this, and we're standing behind them and supporting them, and all five of our Commissioners, the way I understand it, will be in the parade supporting these guys. Is that the way, is everybody committing to be there? Okay, so I didn't mean to put y'all on the spot.
As long as we can. Y'all know my situation.
Yeah, I know, I know.
Just so everybody knows, I'm a high school football referee, and I've been chosen to work the playoffs, so if we're down in South Georgia, I can't, it's on a Saturday, I'm gonna have a problem, so just won't.
Okay, but we're gonna be there for King.
I don't have a choice.
We'll video him in.
Okay.
Black Arizona man.
Okay.
But I do plan to be there.
Veterans Day proclamation, I would like to go over this right quick, and, and I think our veterans here in Hart County know that the Board of Commissioners and the people of Hart County really appreciate our veterans. Whereas on Veterans Day, our nation comes together to honor our veterans and commemorate the legacy of profound service and sacrifice they have upheld in pursuit of more perfect union. And whereas, through their steadfast defense of Americans' ideals, our service members have ensured for county, country still stands strong, our founding principles still shine, and nations around the world know the blessings of freedom. And whereas, the selflessness of our service members is unmatched, and they remind us that there are few things more fundamentally American than doing our utmost to make a difference in the lives of others. And whereas, just as our veterans stood watch on freedom's frontier, so have they safeguarded the prosperity of our nation in our neighborhoods, our businesses, and our homes. And whereas, serving as teachers, engineers, parents, and local government employees, these patriots have made contributions to civilian life that serve as a testament to their dedication to the welfare of our country. And whereas, the Hart County Board of Commissioners designate the week of November 6 through November 11, 2023, as Veterans Week, and recognize all veterans of Hart County by presenting this proclamation to the American Legion Post 109. Now therefore, let it be proclaimed by the Hart County Board of Commissioners, the county of Hart, that all citizens observe the day with appropriate ceremonies in honor of those who have served to preserve the principles of justice, freedom, and democracy. Proclaim this day, the 24th day of October 2023. And we'll get y'all a copy of this with our signatures on it. You can hang on your wall out there and everything, but we, Commander, we really appreciate if you'd like to say a word or two.
Thank you. I want to thank the good citizens of Hart County first and foremost for recognizing our veterans here in Hart County. We've got the great Little Town patriotic town. I gotta tell you, it does my heart good to see the flag flying, and Board of Commissioners from Post 109, members here tonight, from by my heart, we thank you for this and everything. We look forward to seeing you in the parade. And get the word out, y'all come down, and let's have a good time, Veterans Day, okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We appreciate y'all, James.
Need a motion to adopt this proclamation?
So move.
Got a motion by Commissioner Teasley, second by Commissioner Brown. Any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote. All in favor, it's five-o vote. Thank you. All right, now we'll move on to new business, 13A credit for experience in jail.
You see the letter attached from Sheriff Cleveland requesting this Ms. Bowles be given credit for eight years of service. She worked in the jail for a long time before she left, and now is coming back. But now she's part-time. I wanna just, just need to take effect on her full-time status of employment.
I'll make a motion to give credit for eight years of service for policy.
Got a motion by Commissioner Dorsey, second by Commissioner Teasley, like I said, for the record, which is something that we do commonly when, when they have experienced in these positions, so it's nothing really new. So we got a motion by Commissioner Dorsey, second by Commissioner Teasley. Any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote. It's a five-o vote to approve. Now we'll move on to Richard Nation Plaid.
Basically, this is a plaid with three tracks on it. By the recent policy of the board, two tracks is all I can prove in my office. This plaid meets the 100-foot road footage, the minimal maker requirement, it meets the requirement, it's just three tracks. And I'll try to get that.
I'll make a motion to approve it. Second.
I don't want to forget to do the...
Oh, you don't have it? Okay, all right.
I got a picture of it on paper, but I didn't have it.
Okay, I make a motion to approve it, and Commissioner Teasley second it. Any discussion?
One question. This is at the crest of a hill. I don't know what, if GDOT's gonna, I don't know about driveway permits.
He may have to, he may have to put a combination driveway to, to apply. I don't know. That's a, that's a GDOT call. That would be, I think, in our recent discussions and subdivision rules, I think the shared driveway is allowed, will be allowed in the, I don't, I don't know of anything we got current that would prevent them from having a shared driveway.
Now, I have a problem with it, but I just, they just need to know that there's a concern here with, with the crest of that hill.
Right, and again, he's fully aware that we can't give him a driveway permit to get to the property. He'll have to go through DOT.
Is this a developer we're looking at?
No, this is a private individual.
All right, any other questions?
Do we want to make a note in there that he do, that he does have a flag lot?
It's not really a flag.
Unless it's 100 foot wide, so it's not a flag lot.
Yeah. Well, it's actually 140 back there.
Well, I'm talking about on the road. He's got 100 foot on the road.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other concerns or questions? If not, I made a motion, Commissioner Teasley second it. I will call for a vote now. All in favor, it's a five-o vote to approve. All right, next is the Millwood variant request, partial CCB 032.
Commissioner Millwood came in and got a variance on...
My apologies, Commissioners, for being back in front of you again. Unfortunately, or fortunately, life events change sometimes, and we are looking for a variance on a new property next to our other property, from the setback from being 40 feet down to 5 feet. It's a very skinny lot along the lake. It's about 50 feet wide at its narrowest point and about 100 feet wide at its widest point.
How much driveway we have on that road?
30 feet at either side.
30 foot?
Correct. So this would put the house 35 feet back from the side of the road, and the topography of it, it drops off about 20 feet from the road, so the house would have one story at the road, and the rest of it would be lower. So you wouldn't necessarily see the house very much. And I own the property next door.
So that's gonna put you within, how many feet of the road?
35 feet. Thirty-five feet.
Thirty-five feet of the road. You were out there at the end, that's like the last house on the end, aren't you?
Correct, it's a complete dead end.
You own three or four lots?
I own three lots, sir. Yeah, it's at the end of the road, there's no turnaround, there's, there's nobody down there.
The problem is a variance causes problems for us. We've already given you one. I have a problem doing more, let's be honest with you. Because of the fact that we spent all this time with this subdivision ordinance and we're requiring people to sit back further from roads, I just.
This whole area, the whole Lightwood Road area, has numerous other buildings and houses that are within the.
But we didn't give variances for those either. I mean, people did what they did on their own. I'm just telling you, that's mine.
Yeah, you live, live next door, right?
Correct.
And you going to build a new house soon?
Correct, we have some family that's moving up from Florida.
Well, that was my next question, was it family or for sale or what?
No, just remove the families from up here, from Estero Beach. Yeah, they combined them last year.
There it is.
The show sixty, where's Camelot, is that the one to?
To the left, correct, yeah. That's Lightwood Road to the right. I don't know why it says Camelot Drive.
It's a lightwood road.
Yeah, I don't know why it says that.
But is it sixty-foot right away through there?
Correct.
So you got twenty-five on the ceiling. And your house is going to be thirty-five.
Yep, thirty-five off.
Thirty-five off.
Correct.
And what lot are you building on?
Uh, nine. Correct.
The other thing is so.
Correct.
So how, how, how wide is the house going to be?
Um, the left-hand side is about fifty feet over there, and the right-hand side's about a hundred and fifteen feet, I think, on the right. It's kind of an unusual lot.
And you going to be able to meet the setback, core setback requirements as well, the ten-foot on the backside?
There's no core setback.
Yes.
There is?
Yes, there is.
Ten foot.
That's the core line right there, and that's it.
And that's in our ordinance too.
That's, I thought it was just the left and right.
I don't see that fit, I don't see that fit.
You want to go back and look at this some more?
Well, I know the front is going to be an issue, just because the lot is so skinny, going back toward my other house, is that no matter what we do, even if we get the house in there, which we're going to have to make some modifications.
You have to make some modifications.
Yeah, I mean, it's just a really weird lot, it's somewhat of a triangle almost.
That's the core line, that's, that'll be ten feet.
Correct.
It's got, I mean, it's, it's got to be ten foot off.
Right, I got you, I understand that.
I'm making motion, we, we deny this and then come back.
Is it ten foot off the back for the building or just anything?
Probably, well, you can have a dig if you have.
Oh, yeah, no, I mean, okay.
You can't have an overhang either, if it, if it.
That won't be a problem, we're going to put a pool up against the, against the core line.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Dorsey to deny, to deny, and, and until we get this other stuff figured out, you can come back.
Well, there's no part of the building that's going to be within ten feet of the, within the core line, I'm talking about pool, that'd be next to the core line, not the building.
Well, he's made a motion, Commissioner Brown has seconded it. If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor. Five o vote, so.
So what would you like me to do?
First, we're going to have to figure out the core line situation.
Yeah, you can't build in the core.
Well, I don't have a problem with that, I completely understand that. I'm worried about the, the setback variance from that, from the road.
Well, so you're going to have to change something to fix that.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely, I'm going to have to change it.
Make those changes and then come back.
I will do that, no problem, I will do that, thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. All right. Mobile home, thirteen D mobile home inspection discussion. Commissioner Dorsey asked for that to be on because I think we've had some issues with mobile homes being transported here to Hart County and falling apart before they get here and left on the side of the road and all this kind of thing. And it's really a, you know, why are they coming here? Because I guess we don't have nothing to stop them, so that's why we need to work on this. So I'll turn it over to Commissioner Dorsey.
Basically, with the housing situation, and everybody's looking for, everybody's trying to make a buck, bottom line. We got called out to a situation, what, you know, three weeks ago, four weeks ago? Something like that. It was an older model, older model mobile home that was in pretty foul shape on the outside, I didn't look at the inside. And it was being moved into Hart County. There's no inspection process, no nothing, and we, we get complaints about it. If we're going to inspect new houses, I think we're going to have to get to the point where we're going to have to start inspecting these mobile homes, because they need to be safe first of all. And I'm not saying that this was or wasn't, it, it looked pretty rough. And there's been others that have been moved in here. We're going to have to do something, we're going to have to take some action so we can keep this from happening. And I think we're going to have to address these mobile homes that have been burned out and left and all that, just to address it all at one time.
I agree, we a hundred percent on that, because there's a lot of them in probably every district here. I know I've got some in mine, and it's, in my opinion, I'm going to say it like it is in them, but I saw them for the whole community.
Yeah, I think it's good, good practice for us to put inspection process in place, and it's not to hinder the investor, hinder, you know, someone trying to create more affordable housing, but it's really to protect the tenant, the homeowner, who may be that's living inside there. And I mean, it's, it's common practice, and I think we need to follow suit, just like you guys have seen, we got some stuff coming in here that needs to be addressed. I did want to use this time that, you know, when we're talking about this topic specifically, you know, it made me think about inspections. And I really think that we should look at having a county inspector that works for the county. I don't think this is necessarily the time to, you know, try to put that in action, but this, this in particular has brought to my attention more so, and I think here in the near future, we need to look at having in-county inspector, and that's going to help on this. And two, even with an in-county inspector, when we look at this ordinance, having it where someone can hire a licensed engineer that meets whatever criteria we deem it to be, to speed up the process. So if someone's got a mobile home that wants to come in and it needs to be inspected, the inspector says they're three weeks out, it's only fair that the homeowner could hire an independent inspector that meets our criteria to get that inspection done quicker. Getting these homes moved is very difficult, and it's getting harder and harder by the day. People that used to move do not move anymore, people aren't getting the license to do it. Great opportunity for someone who wants to look for a business, for sure. But, you know, when you get that timeframe to move it, you got to be able to move it. There's no waiting around. So from that standpoint, we should have some variance here of, if, if our inspector can't make it out, you know, being able to hire the private party that covers us without hindering the homeowner or the investor.
I don't think it should be a liability of the taxpayer, I think when they get rid of moving, they should have a home inspection of their own, because there's companies out there that do that every day.
Well, I feel like the Thomas County ordinance here, where they, they inspected it before they moved it into the county, I mean.
I think that's what's going to happen. I think that's what's going to happen.
I mean, it's got a work list, or checklist here of things that happens in order, I thought it was a very clear, very, it's, the ordinance said a lot without using a lot of words, and that's my kind of ordinance.
But who done, who done the inspection? Was that, was that a private inspector or county inspector?
Or does Bureau Veritas do those? Okay, I mean, we already said.
But I would like to see where, if Pro Veritas or whoever, you know.
Oh, you can hire your own.
That's already covered on the inspections.
Yeah, you can hire them. If, if, if they just don't want to use them, I mean, they've got somebody else, I mean, they can use them. Or if they can't get to it, then they, they're on a timeline, then yeah, they can go out there on. But did anyone else see anything wrong with the Thomas County?
Thomas County.
Toons County.
Toons County.
The person's Thomas.
Me too, too. I print them all, but I think I printed.
Thomas County.
Thomas, okay, yeah, that was Thomas County, and a Toons County.
Well, Toons was first, I think, and Thomas was.
So Chair, if you could, if you could go ahead and reach out to Bureau Veritas and let them know what we're looking at doing, and make sure they go have the resources to cover it, before we go and do something.
Yeah, I mean, it should be a lot more streamlined process than new house, where you got to wait on the issuance of a permit.
Well, we're talking about used mobile home here, I mean, they go out there and look at it, as they go on.
Exactly, I mean, I, I say, look.